All right, good afternoon, everybody. Sorry we're running five minutes late. I'm going to call to order the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five MARTA work session meeting. It is twelve oh five, I believe, twelve oh six. May I have a motion to approve October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five work session minutes, please? All right, in a second, and if there's no discussion, please vote. Okay. No, no, I was just looking at my screen. I think I got, yeah, I think we got everybody. The minutes have been approved, and I'm going to turn. Oh, you hit against. Okay, can we correct Dr. Bolton-Harris to be for the minutes? We will get that record fixed. I can turn the microphone over to our interim GM/CEO, Jonathan Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to wish everyone happy National Transit Career Day. This day was designated by APTA to highlight careers in public transit and to create opportunity for transit agencies in the public and private sector to partner in recruiting and retaining talent across our industry. Our very own Chief Administrative Officer Dawkins is the chair of APTA's Workforce Development Committee. Not only has she helped organize the national acknowledgement of the day, but here at MARTA we are working every day to recruit and retain the very best talent as we work towards operational excellence and going from good to great. We're partnering with the Interactive College of Technology in Shambly today to engage with students at their career fair about opportunities with MARTA. You'll hear more about our workforce development efforts in the future across all of your jurisdictions. Since my appointment as interim GM in August, I've made it a priority for the C-Team and EMT to be more visible, more engaged, and out on the system more frequently, to inspect our operations, ongoing projects, as well as visiting with our staff, and most importantly, engaging with our patrons. This allows us to have a better pulse on the system, understand what's working, what's not working, to be able to act more quickly, and I've also made it a priority to engage more collaboratively with our elected communities, civic stakeholders, and our workforce. The external affairs team has kept me on my toes and on the go. Just last week, I joined the Chamber, Business, and Civic Leaders from the Greater North Fulton Chamber of Commerce as a speaker at their Strategic Leadership Conference where we learned how other regions are embracing innovation, advancing economic development, and improving transit. Thank you Board Member Hardage for the strong recommendation that I attend. It was a great opportunity to further MARTA's relationship with our partners in North Fulton. Oh, and I'll add that we've been busy engaging media and with our social media channels as well. We started with our, we started our very own MARTA Minute recently, where we updated riders, stakeholders, and the general public on all the exciting work we're doing from the previous week as well as upcoming items to tell our own magnificent MARTA story. These short, minute-long videos posted on our social media accounts at the end of each week give people news they can use in roughly sixty seconds in a fun and interactive way. Over the coming weeks, different team members will deliver the MARTA Minute, allowing customers to get to know them more and for more of us to share those exciting updates with them. We'll also be focusing the minute in each one of the jurisdictions, highlighting some specific advantages that MARTA has within the counties of DeKalb and Fulton and the like. I won't take the time this morning to recite all of the engagements that I and the team have been engaged in over the last quarter, but it is a lot. Through those engagements, we're finding partners who we want to walk alongside with alongside with us and to partner with us to make MARTA the safest, cleanest, and most reliable agency in the country. That information is in your toolkits with more specificity. I want to highlight briefly the C-Team Mobility Operator Empathy Training. A couple of months ago, you'll remember, one of our disabled passengers was left waiting for hours at night at Irvine City Station after getting off of work at the Mercedes-Benz Stadium. We were really disappointed with our service on that day, and we wanted to make sure that I and members of the C-Team knew and appreciated the challenges of our mobility patrons. As such, we went out to.
I was looking at the MARTA Minute, sorry.
That MARTA Minute that you heard a blurb for was when we did the, the bus wrap for OutKast and their induction into the Hall of Fame and the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Stinkonia album. Anyway, we all got together at the Brady Mobility Facility and went through a portion, just because we ran short on time, of the empathy and mobility operator training that all of our operators go through with ourselves as well as our partners in mobility and the contractor that we use to deliver that service. We renewed our focus on empathy as well as care towards that group, and you can look forward to improvements in our mobility service. Our Employee Town Hall, I'd like to highlight next. On October twenty-first, we held an Employee Town Hall in the atrium and online. We updated the workforce on recent changes and to help them rally for our April rollouts in the World Cup readiness that MARTA is prepared for. We took a variety of questions, and we had a full house. Questions presented online and in person were fielded. There'll be more types of engagement along these lines, but in the garages and the facilities across our system, and I'm challenging our C-Team to lead those engagements. I will also be there, but I want our C-Team out in front of our workforce as much as possible. I want to thank Chief Dawkins and her team, as well as Chief Parker and his team, along with IT for making the town hall such a success. I want to touch base on the advisory group. We have had several meetings with the advisory group since the last board meeting, where we discussed communications with Chief Parker, operations with Chief Lopes, plus facilities tour of the IOC, as well as the new railcar. Don't worry, new board members, it's coming in December, don't worry, and it's going to be even more in-depth. This past Monday, we discussed preliminary World Cup security planning with Chief Creer, and advisory group members continue to be very engaged validating most of our efforts. Additionally, this Monday, we identified our schedule for the remainder of the year, which includes one of the members of the group or members, depending on who can show, coming to the board to do their report out to the board on December fourth. No sleeping station and train announcements. Once an issue, we continue to encounter that far too many people are sleeping on our trains and in some of our stations and facilities for long periods of time. Sleeping is not permitted on our trains for safety and security reasons, and in fact, one can't just ride our system all day. There is a limit to the amount of time you have when you tap to come into our system. You have three and a half hours to complete your journey, and in order to address this, we are recording a new message to patrons, reminding them that sleeping on transit system is not permitted. Chief Creer has a new standing order when people come across, when his officers come across sleeping patrons, which is empathetic and kind to maybe help shake them, but if they're not going anywhere, they don't have a destination or don't haven't paid their fare, we are asking those people to leave the system. Now I'm going to turn to our monthly significant initiatives update and run through some of them in as short amount of time as humanly possible. First is Better Breeze. On October twenty-seventh, we were joined by Innit staff and a host of other guests to reveal and demonstrate our new fair gates at Lindbergh Station, thank you Chair, as well as the other board members that were present. I want to extend a special thanks to Board Member I, Scott Fryerson, Pollock, Hardage, Jones, and Pond for attending in person. Also, big kudos to DGM Allen and the IT and Revenue Operations, Capital Delivery, and Infrastructure Teams for putting on a great demonstration of what is to come. Installation of new fair gates is now robust and occurring at Lindbergh, Doraville, Eastpoint, Dunwoody, Ashby, and Georgia State today. Our installations will continue to run through the spring when we celebrate the full launch in April, as all of you know, with ongoing installations on our rolling stock through the balance of two thousand and twenty-six. Our Five Points Transformation Project, preparation for the deconstruction and removal of the concrete canopy at Five Point continues. Customers are still able to access the station through Forsyth Street, and we've had discussions with area stakeholders about beautification plans for the exterior of the station during World Cup. There will be more to come on this when we have our full, robust World Cup briefing to the board. We improved lighting and stepped up police patrols of the site in the area around Five Points with help from the City of Atlanta and Georgia State, and I want to thank Chief Creer for his leadership here and getting these groups re-engaged so that folks feel safe walking from the Forsyth side of the station to the Peachtree side of the station and vice versa. The other large project is our Next Gen Bus Network. As you all are aware, we're launching our brand-new Next Gen Bus Network in April. To tell our customers and the public about this exciting change, we are launching a comprehensive communications and outreach campaign that begins next month. In December, installation of temporary signs begin at more, at the more than six thousand bus stops where service will change, so if you hear customers, please direct them to our MARTA customer service, who can help explain what's happening at their stop with specificity. In January, advertising about the new network will appear on our trains, as well as buses, social media, and digital platforms. In February, we're going to be hosting several public information sessions where customers can learn about the Next Gen Network and what it means for them personally. And finally, in March and April, our outreach teams will be going directly to customers on our system to make sure they know what their bus route changes, if any, and how. So we'll have teams deployed across our system physically at bus intermodals, major stops, to interact with customers, to let them know about the changes that are imminent at that point. For updates to changes, we're directing the public to wwwitsmartafront/nextgen to get all the latest information. As you're aware, we're also adding twelve new on-demand zones through our new MARTA Reach Service, featuring curb-to-curb service anywhere within the zone and connecting people to our MARTA more frequent service if you have a longer trip. Our next project of import coming in two thousand and twenty-six is the Summer Hill Rapid A Line. Almost all of the station platforms and bus pads have been poured, thirteen out of fourteen. Major work has been completed along Hank Aaron Drive, Ormond Street, Haygood Ave, and Carver Stations, and utility relocation and adjustments along Hank Aaron Drive are moving forward through the partnership and innovation between our capital program team, DGM Allen, and ATL DOT. I'd like to quickly touch on World Cup readiness. I'll be extremely brief because you're going to get a full briefing beginning in December and then every month thereafter, but we continue to be a full preparation mode for the World Cup. We have a comprehensive plan that will include operational safety and communications enhancements to ensure the system is ready for the crowds. We're focusing on addressing cleanliness, lighting, parking, and the overall appearance of the system. As a reminder, the match draw will be held on December fifth, and then on December seventh of this year, MARTA will know the teams and times of our first five matches, and that will help hone our planning, not only for ourselves, but the entire region. Our new trains, the third new train is here, and the fourth will be here by Thanksgiving, so when I say train, I mean the four-car train car consists. The team began dynamic testing of the railcars under their own power two weeks ago, and we look forward to offering you all a first look. Obviously, all board members are welcome to the new board member orientation, but the new train, tour of the new trains will definitely be part of that. Just a couple of additional notes, the government and the community, government and community affairs team held a deep-dive briefing on DeKalb County Capitol projects with the DeKalb Board members last week. Your team will continue to meet with the Fulton, Clayton, and City of Atlanta Board members for similar briefings in the coming weeks and months. Mr. Loak, as the governor's appointee, you're invited to all of them, so you can go deep, and it's the same with all our ex-officio members, one of which I just left, Commissioner McMurray at Georgia Transit Summit. Lastly, you'll find your communications amplification toolkit packages, which should have been distributed, as well as a snapshot of my and my team's engagements. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, and apologies for the musical interlude. If you do not follow MARTA on Facebook or Instagram, the, the com social media team is just doing an amazing job, so MARTA Transit, but they're doing a fantastic job of letting everybody know what's going on, and, and it's some really, some really great stuff. And I just think, overall, I want to say Team MARTA's, you know, just doing exceptional work these days, and it is really exciting to see these projects that, you know, a lot of them started under the leadership of Mr. Greenwood, some under the leadership of Mr. Parker, but really getting a chance to see them come to light. It's a super exciting time to be here. For anybody that wasn't at the launch of the Better Breeze, it's amazing. It's, you know, it's just going to be the best in the country, I think, so it's, you know.
And for the Better Breeze, if you just want to see what it's going to look like, the team kept the see-through construction fencing, so you come to Lindbergh, you can walk by the gates and see what it's going to look like in the future. Just visually, it's strikingly different than what we have.
Yeah, yeah, so to Deputy GM Allen, it's, you know, it is a culmination of years and years of work, I think, and it's, it's going to be really a game changer. And I just want to say, I'm hearing it from the community, I'm hearing it from the stakeholders, that everybody's really happy with the direction that MARTA is going. Mr. Hunt and I were guests at the Downtown Atlanta Rotary, what, a week ago, two weeks ago, something like that, it was the same day as the Better Breeze, and got some fireside chat with Keith Parker as the, as our host, who did not tell us what any of the questions were going to be ahead of time, but it was a great discussion, and I, and we got really positive feedback afterwards. So I just want to thank the whole, the whole MARTA team, whether you're on the ops side, whether you're on the comms, you know, community side, you know, you didn't mention, but, you know, I believe that our discussion with our MARTA, you know, employees is going well to, you know, have a fully engaged workforce, so, you know, thank you, everybody, for, for all the hard work that you're doing. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Pritchett, are there any matters for executive session, and I think I know the answer.
Yes, Madam Chair, as always, we have three litigation matters and one real estate matter.
Okay, so with a hand motion, okay, I see Mr. Loak, I see Mr. Pond, everybody in favor? All right, we're going to go into executive session to hear those matters. Thank you. All right, we're going to go into executive session to hear those matters. Thank you.
It is one thirty one. We're going to start out with our public comment. Mr. Pritchett, did we have any public comments submitted via email or voicemail?
Zero.
Zero, okay. Perfect. Next, we're going to move to our in-person public comment. So everybody knows the public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed forty-five minutes if the forty-five-minute time limit is reached before public comments are completed. Public comments will be suspended and the board meeting will commence. Public comment will resume at the end of the board meeting. None of that's going to be a problem today because we only have one speaker. So I'm going to call to the microphone Ms. Myrna Clayton, and you will have two minutes to make your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I'd like to recognize and acknowledge and appreciate all that MARTA bus and rail is doing in the city of Atlanta and metropolitan Atlanta. We appreciate you so much. I especially want to recognize the new and state-of-the-art railcars, the system modernizations and expansions, including the BRT and the upgrading of the five-point station, also the new public engagement, as well as you maintaining your balanced budget and your stellar double, what is it, A-plus and triple A-plus. And so that's amazing. As a matter of fact, I want to thank Mr. Hunt for your plans announced last month to focus on operational efficiency and reliability and the safety and security, the key projects, and the readiness for the World Cup. Moving MARTA from a good transit system to a great one through routine excellence, everyday consistency, and delivery. That's amazing. My name is Myrna Clayton. I am an MBA social entrepreneur, executive director for Showability, which supports hundreds of persons with disabilities and thousands, tens of thousands of those impacted and indirectly related to the disability community. Also, I'm a professional singer, commissioned by the U.S. State Department to represent American music at U.S. Embassies around the world. I say all of that because I want to know why MARTA mobility is a redhead stepchild. And if I could get an extra couple of minutes, I want to explain that because for whatever reason, there's a disconnect. The operational efficiency and the safety does not exist with MARTA mobility. We know this because within the young lady that was impacted at Vine City, that's not a new occurrence. That's not new. Showability has been involved with MARTA mobility for many years, and we've been outspoken since two thousand and twenty-three. We understand that there's a disconnect somewhere. We want to support, we want to be a part of supporting this certainly so that it can be ready for the large number of persons with disabilities that are coming for the World Cup. It's the largest minority population in the country, the only one that anyone can join at any time. And so it's very clear that MARTA mobility has to be improved. Now, mind you, Ms. Davis and her team and Ms. Brown and her team are very familiar with me. This is my only second time coming to the board, but something has to be done financially to support MARTA mobility. Something even with the extent, we know that you guys, I don't know if you guys went through, or maybe the executive staff went through training, and that's phenomenal. But your external affairs didn't say anything about that. As a matter of fact, on social media, we never see anything about MARTA mobility. Why is that? And yet, the training is happening, and I guess you guys are, I don't know who does the training for the drivers, but there's a disconnect between the training and the execution. And so that means maybe there's something with the people that are being hired. We know that the disability community requires a level of sensitivity in terms of people that work with them. And so if you don't have the sensitivity, then even though you're trained, your execution is suspect. And so we want to see improvement in the hiring procedures. We want to see external affairs talking about MARTA mobility. Again, over the last year, I've seen nothing. I didn't go back further than a year, but I've seen nothing about MARTA mobility through external affairs. You guys are doing great things, I'm sure. When I talk with Ms. Davis, there's some things that are planned. We know nothing about it. And so we want to, again, work with you. And the last point I want to make, and thank you for giving me extra time, is that we recognize that the law requires there to be a MARTA mobility. There would be no MARTA, there would be no MARTA, no rail or bus system without equity for the disability community. So you guys are there because of MARTA mobility, but we don't feel it. We're being underrepresented, unwanted, the writers are feeling unwanted, disrespected, and mistreated. And we're asking you to please do something to make that change. Showability wants to work with you, wants to partner with you to support that. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Clayton, for coming today. We appreciate your input. Next, we're going to move on to approval of our minutes. May I have a motion to approve the October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five board meeting minutes, please? And a second? Okay, if there are no corrections or discussion, everybody please vote. All right, the minutes have been approved. For our board committee reports, we're going to start with our business management report with Mr. Pond.
Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, October the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five and approved the following resolutions. A, resolution authorizing a one-time cost of living bonus for the retirees and beneficiaries of the MARTA non-represented pension plan. B, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract for specialized professional services for information security letter of agreement L five zero seven seven one. C, a resolution authorizing the award of a single-source contract for mobile applications, payment gateway, and token management services R F P P P P five zero seven six four. D, a resolution authorizing a modification of contractual authorization for professional services for B two G now software maintenance and support letter of agreement L four five two four six. Resolution E, authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for maintenance and support for the Oracle database ERP and ID management licenses P two seven nine seven eight. Resolution F, authorizing the award of a single-source contract for maintenance and support services for MARTA communications service manager R F P P P five zero seven four nine. And finally, amended resolution authorizing the temporary allowances of alcohol advertising during major events hosted in Atlanta. I request approval of these resolutions.
All right, motion, and have a second. Everybody can please vote. Do you have a problem with the screen? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Those seven items passed. All right, we're going to move next to the planning and capitals program with Dr. Bolton Harris.
Madam Chair, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five and approved the following resolutions. A, resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for authority-wide energy savings performance contract R F P P three seven two seven four dash A. B, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of Cleveland Avenue and Metropolitan Parkway arterial rapid transit, A R T, construction I F B B five zero three one seven dash A. C, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for final design services for the Campbellton Rapid Project A E five zero six two zero. D, resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for Clayton County multipurpose operations and maintenance facility demolition I F B B five zero three three zero. I request approval for these resolutions.
Thank you. Do we have a, yep, second? Everybody please vote. Those four items have been approved.
The committee also received the following briefing on automated fare collection two-point O deployment update. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And then our final committee for the day is operations and safety with Ms. Hardage.
Madam Chair, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five and approved the following resolutions. A, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement and disposal of bus battery services I F B B five zero seven one five. B, resolution authorizing the award of a contract for vehicle towing services I F B five oh six eight five. C, resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of vending services for MARTA headquarters and satellite facilities R F P P five oh seven eight three. I request approval of these resolutions.
Thank you. It looks like we have a second, so everybody can please vote. Those three items have been approved.
The committee also received the following briefings. MARTA key performance indicators, KPIs, E, bus mobility missed trips, and F, rail services missed trips. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you so much. We're going to turn to Mr. Pritchett for our items that came out of executive session.
All right, four items. First, need a motion to approve a settlement in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the Michael Jones versus MARTA lawsuit.
Is a second, and then everybody in favor, raise your hand. All right.
All right, item number two, need a motion to approve a settlement in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars in the Ronnie Frazier versus MARTA lawsuit.
All right, can we have a motion in a second? All right. So it's Sarah and Frida, everybody raise your hand. And just for the record here, Ms. Jones was not present for the executive session, so she's abstaining. All right, got that one?
All right, item number three, need a motion to approve a settlement in the amount of one million five hundred thousand dollars in the Dolores Ivy versus MARTA lawsuit.
All right, I'll move that one. Got everybody? Sarah got the second again.
All right, and then the last item is a rather lengthy resolution, which I'm just going to read word for word. Whereas the Board of Directors of the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority approved a lease with the owners of five seventy-five Marasco Drive Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia three zero three two four, for the relocation of MARTA employees located at the MARTA NX facility at twenty-four hundred Piedmont Road Northeast, Atlanta, Georgia three oh three two four, in the amount of thirteen million sixty-five thousand dollars. And whereas MARTA entered into a lease agreement with LLC Office Acquisitions LLC on December twenty twenty two thousand and twenty-two, and whereas the lease is set to expire November thirty, two thousand and twenty-six, and whereas the thirteen million sixty-five thousand did not cover the full term of the lease and additional funds are needed in the amount of six million three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. And whereas MARTA requires the extension of the lease through the exercise of two options, and whereas the Board of Directors has determined a lease extension is required to accommodate MARTA's staff needs, and whereas Section eight G of the MARTA Act of nineteen sixty-five as amended permits MARTA the power to acquire property, both real and personal, or rights of easement therein, or franchises necessary or convenient for the purposes of the authority by gift, gifts, purchase, lease, as lessy, or contract. And whereas option one has been valued at four million four hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, and option two has been valued at four million seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars, and resolved therefore by the Board of Directors of the Metro Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority that the general manager slash CEO or his delegate is hereby authorized to do all acts, perform all things, and execute on behalf of the authority all instruments of conveyance, other instruments, and agreements as necessary to effectuate the execution of the remainder of the two thousand and twenty-sixth term option ones, options one and two under the lease agreement with and payment to LLC Office Acquisitions LLC in the amount of fifteen million five hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, including an increase to the initial board-approved amount to cover additional funds required under the lease.
Mr. Pond made a motion, I'll second it. Anybody, everybody please vote. Get that? All right. Your resolution passes, Mr. Pritchett. All right, any other matters, comments from the board? Yes, Mr. Fireson.
Yes, Madam Chair, just want to make a quick comment. I want to say thank you to the MARTA art bound department for the event that I attended with my board members, Segara Jones and Paul Loops, the See Our Voice event that was held at Oakland Station, which was a great opportunity for the residents that live in that space to kind of showcase their art and their voice about how they think about that community. It was a great event, and I always appreciate what the art bound is doing to communicate to the community that we value their input in our stations and their participation in helping us shape transit in our community. So it was a great event, and I thank them for attending and myself.
Thank you, Mr. Fireson. Anything from anybody else? I will just let people know, so you have it on your calendar, that the MARTA Holiday Market is going to be Thursday, November twentieth, from three to six at the West End Station. There'll be lots of MARTA merch and other good stuff there, so that's always a fun event. If we don't have anything else, yeah. In one second, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. There is a search committee meeting noticed for two P. M. The clock in the back of the room is off by an hour, so we have fifteen minutes before that. And anybody else, if, I don't know if there's anybody from the press here, the vast majority of that meeting is going to be in executive session, so you are, you know, of course, welcome to be here at the beginning of the meeting. We'll go into executive session. I do not anticipate we will come out of it with any thing to vote on, so I don't want people hanging around for an hour waiting for us to come out of that, but we will be discussing a personnel matter in the executive session. So just want to let you know sort of how that will run. So I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and if you are on the search committee, please come back in twelve minutes for that committee meeting. Thank you so much.